Notice of a Public Meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article V, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, August 28, 2018, at 6:00 PM in the Commission Chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Please stand for the pledge and invocation.
Our flag is to fly of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, our flag's allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Let's pray.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for the nation we're blessed to be in, for the city of Brownsville. And Lord, tonight, we lift up our children to you, and we ask you to lead, guide, and protect every one of them. Lead and guide our parents, lead and guide our law enforcement and first responders, lead and guide our teachers and school staff, and all of our political officials as well. Tonight, we ask you to lead and guide our mayor, our city commissioners, and everybody presenting what they present for the best for the city of Brownsville. Lead and guide our budget department to give us the budget that would be glorifying to you and good for Brownsville, in the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Mayor's activity update?
I have no activity report.
Commissioners' activity update?
I just have a real brief one. I want to let the public know that I have been receiving a lot of calls from homes in East Brownsville that have alleys behind them. All of a sudden, we have a very serious problem with illegal dumping, where we're having building material and all kinds of things that belong at our landfill being dumped behind homes. These are people's backyards, and as a lot of you know, our alleys are right away that belong to the city. That's where our PUB trucks go through, our public works trucks, our trash trucks. So I'm not allowed to say what streets we've been working on, but there are traps set right now, and I warn you, do not illegal dump because you will be caught, you will be fined, and we will make a big public deal about it if you are caught. So I ask you not to dump, and I also ask that if you have somebody dumping behind your house habitually, you call 546 HELP, and you let us know so we can set up a trap and make sure that we are able to prosecute anybody who is endangering your home. It attracts all kinds of rodents and causes all kinds of drainage problems. So I ask that you be vigilant and continue cooperating with the city on these issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Just go ahead.
I just want to take a moment, Mayor, and speak of a man I've admired, a gentleman who went from military royalty to prisoner of war, a maverick senator and happy warrior on the presidential campaign trail. In victory and defeat, Senator John McCain defined by his life of service to our great country. At best, he dignified our politics. I was reading a Slate magazine on Sunday, the eve of his passing, and they couldn't have said it better. As one of the most successful and influential politicians of his generation, John McCain made many important contributions to our country. He championed the most important piece of legislation on campaign finance to pass Congress in the past half-century. He warned about the dangers Russia posed, and he buckled his own party to vote down the repeal of the Affordable Health Care Act with a dramatic late-night hand gesture. He helped to preserve health care access for millions of Americans. But the epitome of Senator John's McCain political decency came at the height of his 2008 presidential campaign. At a town hall meeting a few days before the election, a voter said that he was scared what would happen to this country if Barack Obama were elected president. And first of all, John McCain said, "I want to be President of the United States, and obviously, I do not want Senator Obama to be." But then he pivoted and said, "But I have to tell you, he is a decent person and a person who you don't have to be scared of as President of the United States." In his concession speech when he was defeated, Senator McCain said, "President Obama is now my president." He healed and united a nation at the time he was personally hurt. He put the nation and all of us before his own interests. And I ask that we should all follow his legacy and reach across the aisle, especially in these times. And we were all elected to serve the same community. We should all be working together for the common cause, which is our great city. So in his name and his legacy, we should all come together and try to work and get some of these projects that we need to fulfill.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
I'd like to invite everybody to the inauguration tomorrow night of the substation here at the San Fernando Building in Market Square, everybody who's listening out there too. 5:30.
I'd like to remind folks, the next Seaglavia is coming up next Friday, so please check the website for free fun. That's good for you also. And also, I'd like to thank the Army Corps of Engineers for being here today. I was fortunate to have time to go over to the pleat tree planting ceremony on Resaca Boulevard. And there are tiny little Montezuma cypress and palm trees and wisash now being grown and planted along that Resaca bank. So if you're out there, they protected them with little blue cones. Don't step on them, don't steal them, don't mow them. They're very important for stabilizing the bank and reforesting our area.
Thank you all. Okay.
Anyone else?
No. Wait for next week.
City manager's update?
No update.
Next, we have our public hearings. Public hearing number four, public hearing to discuss the 2018 Advilarm tax rate for fiscal year 2019.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city commissioners. This is our first public hearing, first of two public hearings. Notice that this public hearing was published in the newspaper on August 17. It's also been posted on the city's website and the city channel. Anytime that we propose a tax rate above the effective tax rate, we must have the public hearings. The effective tax rate calculated last time was .688141. This rate raises the same amount of property tax revenue from the same properties in both fiscal year 2017 and 2018. If this rate is adopted, we would have a $712,311 shortfall in our current proposed budget. Current tax rate that we have as current fiscal year is .7001613. This rate will balance the general fund budget. Percentage increase over the effective tax rate is 1.81%. Because of this percentage increase, we must have these public hearings. This is the same tax rate that we had since fiscal year 2012. If adopted, this would be the eighth year in a row that we'd have the same tax rate. The rollback tax rate, the calculated tax rate, this is the highest rate the city may adopt before borders are entitled to the rollback petition. Percentage tax increase over the effective rate is 7.13%. Again, this is only a calculated rate. We are not proposing this rate as of right now, but this is something that we need to calculate and disclose. This schedule provides additional revenues for various tax rates. If we use the effective tax rate, .688141, we have a decrease or a budget shortfall in our current budget of $712,311. If we adopt the current rate that we have right now and not change it, we'll have a balanced budget. And there's incremental increases. If we increase it half a penny to a penny, half a penny generally will generate $285,000 in property tax revenues, and a penny, about $571,000. This analysis of property tax increase, the average taxable value of a resident homestead in Brownsville. Last year, the average homestead value was $90,512. This year, it increased to $93,470. If the effective tax rate is adopted, the tax debt property will be $643.21. If the current tax rate is adopted, it'll be $654.86. And if the rollback rate is adopted, it'll be $692.96. This is analysis of property tax rates by jurisdiction. This is tax years 2017, which is the current year. They have not, most of these entities have not changed their, or published their current tax rate for tax year 2018. BISD, that's $1.26. $1.26 and five. City of Brownsville followed by City of Brownsville of .700163, Cameron County, and then the Texas Alamos College. That concludes the presentation. That is a public hearing.
Anyone here on this issue?
Like always, I just encourage you not to increase the tax rate. We have some people that always that are struggling, and if you've ever tried to help someone that was behind on their taxes and couldn't quite make it, you understand that. I think we can look at our budget and look at what the priorities of the people really are and concentrate on those things. And again, I really appreciate the Grants Department to go after the things that are extra. And so, anyway, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you, Pastor.
And also the valuations. Don't increase the valuations of our property. Please. It affects renters too, and they don't realize it. They just see their rent go up and don't realize that it had to do with the valuation of their properties. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Mayor Rogers? I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead. Two thoughts, Pastor. First of all, the county is the one that appraises all the properties. And secondly, sir, 48% of your taxes actually go to BISD. And the other 52 is divided amongst the city, the county, all the different entities. So I think it's important that people realize in a pie chart that for every dollar you pay, 48 cents goes to BISD.
Commissioner.
My sentiment was just that, you know, I've been here for quite a good while, and we've always maintained, for years, we've always been staying at the same rate. We haven't grown in 12 years. The demands are great. People continuously, day after day after day, continue to ask and want more of the city. But yet, we continue with the same answers. We continue to cut our departments. We continue to tell staff, wait till next year. We've been telling staff, at least in my time here, we've been telling staff for a long time, wait, am I saying that it's time for a tax increase? Not necessarily. All I'm saying is that the demands are greater, and one of the things that you hear when it comes to budget time, especially, we were just hit with a BISD in our insurance, and we were told, you know what, if we had been incrementing just a little bit over the last 15 years, we wouldn't be here right now. And I hate to get to the day where a sitting city commission will have to tell the citizens, we have no choice. We have to because we thought it was politically correct to keep the tax rate the same all the time, but then eventually, the needs will become greater. And I just think that maybe, just maybe, sometimes it's better to grow just a little and take it as it goes, because eventually, you know, like I'm telling you, 12 years, for 12 years, we've been maintaining the same rate, and we continue to need more things.
We kept the same rate, but you saw that the valuation has gone up dramatically, and it does every year.
Yeah, I'm not trying to debate you. I'm just trying to say that, you know, that's reality. Reality is what we have to deal with on a yearly basis when it comes to our fiscal year. Thank you.
I believe you, Pastor, myself, and just for the public to be aware, this year, when I opened my property value of my home, it went up about $60,000. And so, you know, I went from paying $2,900 to over $5,000 in taxes, property taxes. So the answer is, you need to always make sure that every year, you check, they mail you out every year, the value of all of your property, everything that you have listed on it. And, you know, sometimes a swimming pool is added and you don't have one. So you always need to be very vigilant with your property and make sure that you are checking what the county is taxing you for. And you can always contest it. I contested mine, and they lowered it just a little bit, but that's life, right? You've got to pay your taxes and you have to. That's right. All the way in San Benito. But we work very hard here, and we cut as much fat as we can to make sure that we never raise taxes on the community. But you raise very valid points because there are other parts of the community that are not as fair with our constituents.
And we do appreciate you all for that. Thank you.
I know you do, Pastor. Thank you, Brett. Anyone else on this issue?
Would you continue?
Second.
All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That's the first reading.
Public hearing number five, public hearing to discuss the city's proposed fiscal year 2019 budget.
Mayor, Commissioners, here's the budget. It's a recap of what we did last meeting, but now, so it's not just me. Jorge Santillana is your Assistant Finance Director, but he's got the duties of the Budget Officer now. I think we've missed a component of watching the budget and watching how we're going to tighten the budget. So his whole job is to make sure that we're within our means and our budget and seeing how performing to watch where our expenditures are, and every quarterly, give us an update on what's going on with the budget so we can tweak it instead of waiting for the end. So Jorge's going to go ahead and run you through the same presentation, but it kind of locks him into, I told him during video.
Thank you, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Commission.
Okay, I don't know if congratulations, but I certainly wish you well in everything you're going to be doing.
Thank you. I've been doing this behind the scenes for many years, so I'm very familiar with this budget.
I know you have, Jorge, so keep up the good work, my friend.
Thank you. Okay, this is the second budget hearing on the fiscal year 2019 proposed budget. And as we developed this budget, we kept in mind the, all the committee priorities that were given to us at the budget town hall meeting back in May. Some of these priorities being the police and fire, traffic court enforcement, administration, streets and drainage, cultural recreation, and vector control and wellness programs. Again, this is the maintenance and operations budget. This is to finance or pay the day-to-day operations of the city. And we're going to start with the general fund revenues. The major revenues being the sales taxes, we show increases compared to 2018 numbers. Also, in property taxes, we also show increases in fees and charges for services, as well increases, and we show a decrease in licenses and permits and fines. Again, on the right side, we have the level of control that the city has over these revenues. On the sales taxes, there's indirect control, of course. Every time we make, approve a commercial permit, for example, or promote the events, they're indirectly, or does affect the sales taxes of the city. On the property taxes, as was mentioned before, we, the city, can control the tax rate on a year-to-year basis, but we have no control over the assessment values. That's up to the personal district to control those values. And then on the fees and charges for services and license and permits, the city can set fees, but then it's up to the laws and regulations, and sometimes the market conditions limits how much we can charge on those fees and fines and permits. Here, we have the major, well, keeping in mind that the city, as all the cities, they're service-oriented, saying this is, the majority of the budget goes to personnel, in this case, 70% of the budget. In this case, we have four major functions of the city, and then the workforce falls under these functions. 52% going to public safety, followed by mobility, being the metro, airport, traffic department, and public works. That's at 26%, followed by cultural recreation, 11%, and administration, 11%. Here, we start with the expenditures, the administration. The blue column, there's the 2018 amended budget, the 2019, that's the proposed budget. And on those, most of these departments, we see that the 2019 numbers, they're almost the same as 2018 with exceptions. In this case, you look at the right side, we have the city secretary. There was a request for the May 2019 election, 725,500, that's included in the budget. Also, for the planning, we have the sidewalk master plan for 66,011. We go to the cultural recreation, we have the, again, the 2019 numbers, they're below the 2018 amended. And the request on the right side, we have the equipment and web hosting, 38,400 for the library, and also the maintenance of the checkout stations, 28,300. Next, we have the mobility expenditures. Here, we have pretty much all of them, they're within the same numbers, in line with the 2018 numbers. The request included in this budget, coming from the traffic department, 185,000 for signals maintenance. And here, we have the public safety, the police department and fire department being the main components of this function. On the right side, we have the request for fire EMS, we have the equipment and services contracts, request 86,937, increasing medical supplies, 90,000. And as mentioned on the last hearing, we have the, included in this budget, we have three probationary firefighters for 150,284. On the public health, we have the clinic supplies, 15,050. The animal shelter supplies, 24,800. Vector control, 100,000. And then we include also the three animal care technicians, which is two full-timers and one part-timer, for 77,589. And then this was possible by reallocating existing resources with no increases in budget. And also, at the last meeting, there was a request for two, for officers for the police department. We went back and met with the police department, and we were able to identify savings and also reallocate existing resources, and we were able to include in this budget two probationary officers for 102,450. So they're included in this budget.
So we're going to be adding two officers, two new positions for officers for the next fiscal year.
Next fiscal year, yes.
Wow, that's exciting. Thank you.
Michael, we're not having this anymore through the contract?
What we'll do is after, it has to be the budget first, and once it's been allocated budget, then we have to do the resolution and bring it back. And that's what you'll see after fiscal year, because right now, we're just establishing that the abilities for the funding is available, and then we do have to go through the resolution and the contract to get that going. Right now, we're just specifically doing the funding available.
But they wouldn't oppose.
I hope not.
If I may add, I think Commissioner Longoria, at one point, I asked, I actually started asking about that point. So apparently, as long as they're patrolmen, it doesn't matter, you can keep hiring. It's just the rank, the ones that are actually in the collective bargaining.
So the two new that we'll be adding will be patrolmen?
Yeah, patrolmen, probationary police officers, yes.
That's excellent. Okay, thank you.
Now, some of the highlights on the expenditure side, new for 2019, our collective bargaining includes a civil service increase for police and fire totaling 999,563. City increase in city medical contribution, 471,000. And also, the city election, 726,000. And then the additional expenditures that were covered in the prior slides, 854,384. In order to balance the budget, we identified the additional revenue sources. And the first one, the temporary hiring freeze, really that's what it is, is basically improve hiring practices. Basically, now, when a vacancy becomes available, we ask the questions, do we need that position? Do we need a full-time, maybe we need a part-time position? So there's more questions asked, that's why we do anticipate those savings. Also, we have a projected sales tax revenue, 1,707,000, about the 2018 numbers, and other revenue increases of 2,080,000, composed of the property taxes, 941,000, increasing PUB cash transfer, 344,000, and increasing bridge fund cash transfer, 795,000. The next budget, dates on the budget, this hearing is going to continue next week, on Tuesday, September 4th. So it's going to be continuation of today's hearing, and then on Monday, September 17, that's the, we're scheduled to adopt the 2019 budget. And that's the end of the presentation. Questions?
Very good. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Would you continue, Mayor?
Second.
All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Nice job.
Next, we have public hearing number six, public hearing in action on second and final reading and ordinance number 235-2018-Roe28, to rezone from Dwelling Z to Dwelling G for 843.5 acre tract of land, more or less, out of portion of lots 42, 43, 44, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 61, 62, 63, 64, and 65. Palo Alto Grove subdivision number one, and share 22 of the Espito Santo grant located near Old Alice Road, Olmito, Texas.
Ms. Minor, if you could give me one second. Mr. Lopez, I think you were briefed a lot of these meetings, and I think revolving this public hearing. So if you could also just get with Ms. Minor, that way we have questions that you can try to answer to the best of your ability. Is that why?
Good evening, honorable mayor members of the commission. This item being brought to you tonight was tabled at the last commission meeting in order to facilitate conversation between two adjoining property owners to discuss the necessities on the use of their land and any potential impact to the future and respective projects. This conversation has taken place, and at the request of one of the property owners, this item is being brought back for your consideration. To offer a brief recap, this is the land in question. It is located on Old Alice Road. To the north, you can see there's vacant land in addition to a civic institution, which is the Cameron County Detention Center. To the west, we can see another civic institution, which is namely the sports park. To the south, it's undeveloped land in addition to a switchyard and single-family dwellings. And to the east is undeveloped land. The request tonight is for a area district rezone from Dwelling DZ to the proposed Dwelling There were 40 mailouts and zero written opposition for this rezone request. The request is consistent with a comprehensive plan and future land use plan, and planning and zoning supported to rezone from Dwelling Z to Dwelling G. This is a public hearing.
Mayor, Mayor Commissioners, we did have a, I had a request to table and sit with both the applicant, both applicants and the neighbor, and they did sit down. I don't know if there was a solution solved, a solution come up with, but there is a public hearing open, if you want to hear them speaking, what their ideas are, or what their thoughts are on the project.
Was it that there's two adjoining owners that are opposing it?
Right now, there's one adjoining owner, as of now, that has brought up during the public hearing that they're opposing the.
Who is that?
That is the landlord next to the GBEK.
Next to GBEK?
No, the CDCB and the landlord next to it is GBEK. The owner.
Can we say who it is, or?
Yeah, well, GBEK, the corporation, GBEK.
Okay.
And if I may, Michael, I think the question was that if at any point you had informed the people or the interim, I guess, president at that point, or the interim president, who I believe was Mr. Salinas, was there ever addressed with him?
And what I could do, I'll pass, I think Connie did, was part of this growing behind it, and I think Connie can help with that.
They were actually noticed via mail. At that point, there was no, we didn't receive any opposition. However, one of the property owners did disclose that they had a conversation with him where he did not verbally oppose.
And, well, one of the things that's concerning is it was never really brought to the board with the GBEK board. And actually, I don't think that map really personifies everything that's around there, but that is, there's a UP switchyard that actually runs beneath it and all along that corridor, and all that is really the industrial corridor that runs around 550. And one of the things, and I just want to make very clear that I am not for or against, I think it's up to the will of the commission, and all I can say is that I would like to put out some facts. And if you look at this, this would be an asset generating piece of property that we have as GBEK. And I wish that they would have sent out this map, which actually shows the whole corridor and what's there. And there's a PUB property that's also adjacent to GBEK. The county actually owns some land, and it is an industrial corridor. And really, I think it's a philosophical debate versus business versus low-income housing. And we understand that we are in a need of low-income housing, but at the same time, we're also in a need of actually creating an asset generating pieces of property. And that is the whole reason why we go back to actually trying to increase the tax rate, which is actually very high relative to every other city in the valley, because we frankly don't have any property values. And the only way we're going to get more money is non-residential property taxes. And that's one of the whole ideas between, behind creating this industrial corridor, which was actually created back in 2010. So that was way before, I guess, my time, and I know Commissioner Munguia's time, and I know this was something that was done through GBEK, the BDC, and the city of Brownsville. It was never rezoned. I think that is something that was at fault with the administration, GBEK, and the BDC. But the thing is, there is a jail that created the buffer, and the whole idea was to create a corridor. And it's right next to a railroad, and that's the whole idea. And if we were to have housing there, well, that would kind of destroy the whole idea, and we wouldn't be able to recruit industry to actually move to that spot. On the other hand, well, we do have low-income housing that we do need, that is a need that's been expressed. I know housing has given us those reports. But at the same time, we also need income generating assets. So really, it's a philosophical debate, and I would, I think I can answer some questions. I know Mr. Lozoya is here to answer questions, Mr. Lopez, and I know Mr. Bennett is here. So I think it's really, as So I think it's really as much information as we can get out there, if you have any questions. But that's, that's kind of where we were as G B E C board members. We were never really told about this.
My concern, are you?
Excuse me, okay, I'll tell you what. This is a public hearing, and I'm kind of partial to letting the audience go first, if you all don't mind.
Sure.
Thank you. Mario Lozoya, the executive director of G B E C. I think it would benefit the mayor and the commission, the commissioners here, to look at the larger picture here, that is not visualized here. Adjacent to the right of this subject property are, is a large tract of the G B E C property. And as Commissioner De Leon mentions, it is incorrectly zoned.
What is it zoned?
It's zoned as residential currently. And I think we can agree that a G B E C property probably shouldn't be zoned residential. That's not the intent of any G B E C property. It's a mistake made, and I'll take a hit for it. I think probably when I should have, when I came here, I should have looked at all G B E C properties. And we should be in the process of zoning the G B E C properties correctly. This particular one is not. So when you look at the overall asset and understand why is a G B E C property there, when you look at the bottom portion of this, of this picture here, you see the rail yard. Above it is five-eleven, to the left is Alice Road, to the right is Paredes. All of that together really accounts to what I believe is a strong asset that Brownsville has. I would be pressed to find a similar asset anywhere in the valley. So in order for G B E C to really court a company of an industrial substantial size to benefit or to leverage this particular asset that I'm talking about, it would be very difficult if this particular area is zoned to its left with density and residential density. So I think the decision here should be made is, as a city, are we in a position to increase residential housing? Or are we in a position to leverage the asset of a potential true industrial corridor? And my position is, I want to, I think both projects have strengths. If the city's decision is to increase residential density in this region, then we should, as a city, agree that then we should create a different industrial corridor elsewhere. Because what happens is now the value of this particular asset will then be reduced as asset as it is today.
Thank you, Mario. I'm sorry. Do you have a purpose already designated for that tract?
I'm sorry, sir.
Do you already have a project for that tract?
We have two prospects. One of them, the reason we ran into this particular issue is that one of the prospects actually was looking at multiple communities, Brownsville being one of them, which included much more acreage than this. And so when they made the ask, we started doing our due diligence, is when we discovered that even our own property is not zoned properly.
Did they have an objection to having residential property adjacent to it? Have they expressed concern?
Yes, sir.
They did. And so is this being slated to be an industrial park? Is that what it is?
Yes.
When you say industrial corridor, is that what you mean, industrial park?
Yes, sir. So as Commissioner De Leon alluded to earlier, about ten years ago, way before my time, there was, there was a study made that actually designated this as industrial corridor.
And you have two other industrial parks right now? Are they being utilized?
We are about to move two companies into one of them. I can't disclose that project yet, but to answer your question, yes. But it's a smaller footprint than this particular asset that we're talking, that we're looking at now.
And if I may, Mr. Lopez, you received an email, I don't know if you're at liberty, but from, I guess, the rail company addressing.
And that's what I was looking for. And I know Mario did mention to the U P that they were, they had concerns for it, too. Unfortunately, I didn't, I didn't see it. I saw it, but I can't find it in my emails. But yeah, I did. Mario also mentioned to, shared it with me, that the U P had a discussion with.
How does it work with the railway? When you, do you have to send them notice? I mean, are they like a property owner?
They're, I would have to ask Connie, and that would differ. She would have to defer.
So our current zoning ordinance provides for a two-hundred-foot buffer, and which was not within that buffer, outside of that area.
I think the reason for that one says that is that there's that irrigation district that runs right through there. I think that's what creates quite a buffer in its own right. But I'd like to give the, you know, this, I want the audience to know that these are both legitimate situations that require some really serious consideration. And so everybody's entitled to their opinion, everybody's entitled to their, you know, viewpoint. So I would like to make sure that the entire spectrum of views are aired in public, if you don't mind.
If I can answer to the comment about the rail. The comment that I made about when you compassed the rail, the Old Alice Road, the five-eleven and Paredes together creates a strong economic development asset for Brownsville. But as residence, as residential density is introduced into that mix, then you reduce the strength of your assets. Would be true to the rail yard will then be reduced to its potential, because you want to reduce nuisance lawsuits. Obviously, nobody wants to have any issues next to a rail yard facing a potential density residential. So to protect the citizenry, obviously, U P Rail will then reduce their activities and not expand from it to try to mitigate nuisance lawsuits. We've experienced this in different communities. So this is why, my point was that the total asset as a whole will then be reduced in its strength. And then, as a G B E C, my recommendation would be for us to look for a different economic development corridor or industrial corridor, because this one would be reduced in its strength.
Is there another area in the city, I guess?
Another area in the city that has the rail and the multiple access roads as it is in this site, there aren't any.
Shouldn't you be looking for another area anyway?
We should be looking for multiple areas, yes.
Are you?
Yes. We already are. Yes.
Good.
Nick?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. My name is Nick Mitchell Bennett, and I'm the executive director of the Community Development Corporation of Brownsville, otherwise known as CDCB. And I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak today. I'm here to request your support for the requested zoning change before you today for the planned Palo Alto Groves community. Let me back up just a little bit about what's, who we are and what we're doing. Over the past eight years, the Community Development Corporation of Brownsville has adopted the policy never to build, design, or even develop a home or neighborhood without asking our clients one very important question. What do you want in your home or your neighborhood? We've been told that this is a very revolutionary idea, actually asking the customer what they want. Standard development practice in Brownsville over the last fifty years has been to build whatever will make the developer large sums of money by telling the buyer what is offered is what the buyer wants, not the other way around, building what the buyer wants. The sad fact is the business model has worked for the past fifty years, and the result has been the development of communities that are unhealthy and focused on the car and unattractive. CDCB is ready to take a revolutionary idea to the neighborhood design process and develop a community that is focused on people, not the car, not just the house, not parking, but people. CDCB has partnered with the international award-winning site designer Rick Harrison from Golden Valley, Minnesota, to design and develop a community that is balanced economics, existence, and the environment. This new process is called perfurbia. In order to upend the development process and offer the buyer exactly what they want, a healthy neighborhood focused on people, as well as being affordable to low, moderate, and high-income buyers, CDCB has purchased two hundred and twenty acres of land just east of Brownsville Sports Park called Palo Alto Groves. CDCB has asked buyers where they want to live, what is important to have in their neighborhood, and how to do what they, and how to do what they want to live in this neighborhood. Palo Alto Groves as a community is the answer to those very important questions. Palo Alto Groves would be home to over a thousand families living in six hundred and seventy-four single-family homes and an estimated four hundred cottage rental homes. Prices will range from a hundred thousand to a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, as well as affordable rental units for all income levels. Palo Alto Groves will also be the site of the new Idea Public Schools campus to open its doors in twenty-twenty-two. Palo Alto Groves' focus on people has allowed CDCB to design amenities that build community, safety, and healthy living. CDCB has planned two park areas with play areas, picnic tables, and shade covers. CDCB will also capitalize on the new fitness culture growing in Brownsville with over five miles of sidewalks and hike and bike trails connecting to the Brownsville Sports Park just across Old Alice Road. CDCB has partnered with Esperanza Homes from McAllen to build each of the single-family homes in Palo Alto Groves. Esperanza Homes and its parent company, Rhodes Enterprises, is the builder and developer of the very popular community, Tres Lagos in North McAllen, building over a hundred homes per year. Esperanza Homes began in two thousand and seven in Mission, Texas, and has grown to serve the expanding communities across the Rio Grande Valley. Esperanza is passionate about the customer experience, building exceptional homes in the communities where we all live, work, and serve. Nick Rhodes, our partner, president, and CEO of Esperanza Homes, has been instrumental in the community's expansion. Currently, CDCB has partnered with Esperanza Homes to complete a twenty-nine-unit project here at Brownsville, where we have great response to the home designs and affordability. All in all, Palo Alto Groves is the subdivision development of the future for Brownsville. Ask the customer what they want, locate this community in a highly desirable location, and design it to focus on people. The growth of Brownsville and the lack of client-focused, healthy, and affordable housing suggests that Palo Alto Groves would be exactly what the customer is looking for. As you are all aware, CDCB and its partners have been in the pre-development planning stage for over a year on this project. We are ready to start. Actually, we were supposed to start Monday. CDCB has totally been transparent through this entire process. We have met with all parties related to the project in order to answer any questions and make any needed changes. We have taken members of the city planning staff and P U B staff to visit Tres Lagos in North McAllen. We actually put them on a bus and drove them to McAllen to see what they were doing at Tres Lagos, and see what the finished product would look like and feel, and to ensure we answered all questions and made all needed changes, were needed to meet, and needed to meet all Brownsville requirements. CDCB followed current zoning regulations, as well as the current long-term plan produced by G B E C for this area. The tenure, the plan that was done ten years ago that Mario brought up actually calls for eight hundred single-family houses. So I didn't do anything different than what the plan called for. We did not hide our plans, nor did we try to change the use from non-residential to residential. The only request has been to change the zoning in order to increase the density, in order to make the project more affordable for buyers. To date, CDCB has signed contracts with Ambiotech Engineering, Esperanza Homes, Rick Harrison Land Design, Peterson Construction, Frost Bank. B C I C actually gave us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build the park already. Valley Baptist Legacy Foundation has given us three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to build the second part. The plat has already been approved by the city of Brownsville. CDCB has been awarded a four percent tax credit equity for the construction of Casitas Palo Alto, and has entered into negotiations with Texas State Affordable Housing Corporation for bond financing for the project. The city of Brownsville is in the midst of an affordable housing crisis, both for low-income families and middle-income families. And this project was created to answer that crisis. The project is good for Brownsville families and the city of Brownsville's tax bases. It adds five hundred million in future tax value. So it is an asset that has a value, a big value. I would assume, and I don't mean to assume, but I'm going to assume, that if we put an industry park in there, they're probably not going to be, have to pay taxes. But my homebuyers will, and so will the renters. CDCB followed all the rules. We have been totally transparent, and we ask that you allow us to meet our mission, to develop affordable, livable, and sustainable communities for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Any questions from?
How much money did you get from P U B, sir?
How much money?
Did P U B make a recent contribution to your organization?
Yeah, they gave a recent contribution to support the youth build program.
How much was that?
That was fifty thousand dollars. Is that a problem?
Is that in a tax, sir?
No, I'm just asking.
Because I mean, that's what it sounds like.
I'm asking, well, I'm just asking. They gave us five fifty thousand dollars to support.
You asked her if I had questions. I asked a question.
Yes, they did. They gave fifty thousand dollars.
I mean, you're, there's no need to be.
I didn't know if I needed to explain it any further. It was to support our youth build program, our low-income students who are high school dropouts, who are looking for training in construction. And that was able to help them start our new program, which is our community, our computer programming system for the students to learn that over the next five years.
Any other questions from anybody?
My only concern is that it's packaged as low-income housing.
No, it's not packaged as low-income housing. It's actually, it's actually affordable housing.
Affordable housing.
For low-to-moderate income families, yes.
Okay. So my concern is the industrial property that's going to be built next to it. And I, like, just take away the label, even if it was a, you know, it was not packaged as low-to-moderate income housing. I don't think you should have any kind of housing next to industrial properties. I have that in my district, you know, where the city codes were not up to date. We had a lot of properties that used to be county and whatnot. So we have a big mix of industrial near homes, near schools, near Vermillion. We had a recycling center that was going to go directly next to a lot of homes, and I have never seen as many people show up to city hall to protest that happening. So my concern is, I don't care if you're rich, poor, anything, I just don't think there should be any kind of housing directly next to heavy industrial that G B E C is working really hard to bring.
I understand. However, the property was zoned, is zoned residential, and I did all my homework to pick property that we purchased to do this project next in a residential area. The G B E C plan called for eight hundred homes in the plan. It's right there in the summary chart. So we were literally following this commission's approved plan to do this. We have gone through all of the steps. The plat has been approved. And this, all this was, because it's zoned residential. I can go build houses there now without anything from you all. You know, I just want to be able to make it more affordable for both moderate and low-income families, and to meet the call of the plan, which was to build eight hundred houses in this area. And so I get what you're saying, Commissioner, totally get it. But I, I was just doing what you all approved in the past, and made sure I checked all the boxes, and my ducks were in a row. And, you know, it's been a year, we've been talking about this. I've met with many of you about this project. I've invited all of you to meet on this project. So I've just, I'm a little bit, you know, second reading on the, you know, on the consent agenda typically has never, in my years, never, in my twenty-five years of doing this, been called off. And so I was just a little bit taken back, and, you know, we're ready, we're ready to go. We're ready to create a five hundred million dollar tax base for the city over the next ten years.
Can you repeat the asset generation again?
So the tax, the, there'll be around a thousand residential homes there when it's all done. And according to our calculation, the value will be about five hundred million dollars when all said and done.
And if this does not go through, what do?
Right now, the property, the property earns the city of Brownsville somewhere around thirty thousand dollars a year.
So a huge increase. And if it does not go through, what does CDCB stand to lose financially? Or Rhodes building for that?
Currently, we're into this for about five million dollars.
And Rhodes? And Rhodes? Will you lose, you're Mr. Rhodes?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you lose anything financially if this property does not, if this does not happen?
Yes, ma'am.
How much?
We've worked on it for two years, plenty over a million dollars, planning, needs, overhead, marketing, project management.
How many homes can you build for five million dollars?
Five million or five hundred million?
You said.
The value will go to five hundred, five billion?
But what you are losing?
Let's call it sixty?
A lot.
At a time? Yeah. Yeah, because that would just keep going and going and going.
Mr. Lopez, has there been a request for any TERS on some of these properties?
A TERS, yes, had the first step of TERS is to submit it with the city secretary. And we are now, city management is looking with our attorney to see the requirements behind it. So yes, there hasn't been a TERS.
There's been a request?
Yes, Commissioner, I have a TERS.
Request.
Request that would be coming before you all. It will be the first fully a hundred percent affordable housing TERS in the state of Texas. So one hundred percent of the proceeds of the TERS would go for down payment assistance. It would generate about forty thousand, forty million dollars in down payment assistance for people buying houses in this area, as well as in the rest of the county. So affordable housing, using a TERS for a. housing, using a TERS for affordable housing is the only statute in the law, in the TERS law, that can be used outside the jurisdiction. So within the jurisdiction, we can use the money there, as well as then being able to go into each one of your own districts that's outside of this district and spend money there as well on, on, on affordable housing. So this is not a standard TERS, and I won't be disparaging about standard TERS, but I will say that it's not a standard TERS. It would be a TERS for 100% affordable housing for down payment assistance for families earning less than 140% of the area median income.
Mario, when I've got you here, this industrial potential, is, is that imminent? Or do we know? I mean, I'm just, I, I, I'm pretty familiar with this project because I've lived with it for a year, and I think I followed their background as, as to what was there. And I knew what the, what we had was residential, and there was a plan like 10 years ago. I think you and I discussed that some time back. But is it, do we have a, like a, I know we have a potential person that's, or, you know, company that's looking at it. But is there any timeline on that, or do we know?
No, sir. We, we don't know. We just know that there's multiple communities. And, and what I'd like to impart and to, to, to yourself, sir, and the, and the commission is even beside, aside the fact that there's prospects calling about this particular acreage, I think even just aside from that, the fact that there's a GIBIC property in there that's owning properly, that's, that's, that's the issue that I'm trying to address. It's either, either the direction is to support this kind of housing and not a, a industrial corridor, then I will support the decision of the city. If the decision is to create a different industrial corridor elsewhere, then, then we will support that. Or, or I, I think what I'm trying to say is that the current land that GIBIC has there currently will, will effectively be reduced in, in its asset as, as heavy industry will not move next to residential density.
How many acres are contemplated in your industrial corridor?
Excuse me, sir?
How many acres are contemplated in your industrial corridor that you're speaking of?
When we, when we aggregate the total acreage in that area, it's close to 1,000.
How much, when you say aggregate, how much?
There are, there are about six different properties, including this one, together would aggregate about 1,000.
And have they already agreed to be part of your 1,000 acres?
Not all of them, no, sir. One, one of the reasons is because of the zoning of the GIBIC zoning, is zoning correctly.
Okay. PUB owns 82 of those 1,000 acres. Have they agreed to donate those 82 or sell them to you for?
We're not talking about donating, sir. It's, if a prospect would come, the prospect would then negotiate with each landowner for, for, for a price.
Has the county agreed?
That I know of, no, sir.
Okay. How about the Orestes in the 70s? They haven't either? How about Shades of Earth? Have they agreed?
No, sir.
Wheeler?
We haven't approached them yet because the fact that the GIBIC property is, is zoned incorrectly, it, it almost renders us useless to do that currently.
So you really don't even have your plan implemented at all, do you?
That's correct. But I'm, I'm going, I'm going with the fact is that if in the past we designated this as a, as an industrial corridor, then from the beginning, we didn't zone things properly, and it's still zoned improperly today.
Regard?
No, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry.
Do you know how much value the GIBIC paid for that property? What they paid when they bought it?
I do not know, ma'am.
It was several millions of dollars back then, so I can only imagine now.
Is GIBIC willing to cover the losses of CDCB and Rhodes' construction since they did nothing wrong?
I don't think GIBIC's done anything wrong either.
I'm not saying they did. I'm just, I mean, if this is not voted correctly, they stand up to lose a great deal of money.
But that is something that the city should also address, and when the interim director was.
Well, I asked a question he didn't answer.
Go ahead, Mr. Lozoya.
I answered your question.
If the city's direction is to maintain this as an industrial corridor, then GIBIC would then see what is there we need to do to join the city to make sure that we maintain it as an industrial corridor.
You didn't answer my question. I asked you if you were willing to cover the costs that will be lost.
I'm willing to entertain, and, and I don't understand what the cost was of purchasing the land. I would like to look at that, the documents, how much did it cost them, and all the expenditures that they've incurred, for me to look at it before I can answer that question.
Well, do you have any questions?
My deal is, as you alluded to a couple of minutes ago, this is something very important, and, and both projects, both ideas here are, are great, which I fully support. Nick supported your projects in the beginning. Now we have this issue that's, that's coming up. I don't know, I know there's a lot of questions that I have and that we're going to be making here, and I don't know if we have enough time to cover everything. I, I would like to maybe entertain a motion to maybe table and allow the city, CDCB, GIBIC, to sit down as early as tomorrow or day after tomorrow and try to figure out some sort of a solution, and come back to the city commission and say, this is what we talked about, this is what we worked, and this is what we're proposing. Whether it be you covering, GIBIC covering those costs, you moving somewhere else, and CDCB staying there, I don't know. But I think this is something that, that needs to be discussed.
It sounds like you've got a motion to table on the floor.
If I could, if I could add, Mayor, I think it's important that we bring PUB and the county into the mix and maybe, maybe even BISD, because if they're looking for a TERS, 50% of that is BISD. I mean, so I want, I'd like to see.
Oh, you're looking at Los Fresnos, wow.
So really, you see, I think that's the questions. And I'll be honest, I think we could probably find them.
On the TERS, on the TERS, it was only for the city and the county. The county has given us their full support.
Here, let me, can I make one? We've got a, a motion on the table. I mean, on, on, yeah, on the floor. Is there a second to that? Okay.
This is still a public hearing, though.
Huh?
It's still a public hearing.
Okay. Well, okay. Does anyone else hear on this thing? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, there's a motion now to table with a second by Commissioner Tetra. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. We're going to table, and let me just suggest something to you guys. You know, I know that this side over here with the, they, they've, they're ready to rock and roll, to be honest with you. I would like to suggest that maybe we do some sort of evaluation for like on a point system. And, and Mario, you and I had a, a great conversation. This, this is not something that's adversarial, to be honest with you. This is something that needs solution, much like, I guess, what we would have talked about if Senator McCain were here. He would talk about how we would try to figure out what's in the better interest of, of, of our city in every aspect. So I urge everyone to work together. And, and, and we're just, we're, we're going to have to give us a little bit of time. And, but I don't want it for very long, Michael, if, if you don't mind.
No, and, and I appreciate that, Mayor and Commissioner. And, yeah, the time-wise, I, if we were to call September 4th, it would be a little too rushed for us.
We have been meeting every month, every week in September, right? Or is it October?
The next meeting is September 4th, but then we have the next one not until?
The 17th.
Seventeenth.
Yeah. I, I think that we'll try to shoot for the 17th of September, and, and I understand if there's anything that we can do with regards to the things that we're talking about here from the city. Please assist these parties in trying to, I, I'm sure there's deadlines that have been passed or, you know, I mean, they're, all that stuff. But I need to have this in, in the sense of unity and progress, and in the best interest of the city. Okay?
And, and that's what, just to, just to confirm, the next meeting is September 18th.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do that. So we now, can we go on to public comment?
Our next agenda item, public comment. We had no one sign up for the public comment, so we'll go on to the next agenda item. Items for individual consideration, action item number eight, consideration and action to award the specific and aggregate stop-loss medical insurance coverage contract to an insurance carrier.
Good evening, all members, city commissioners. This item is to award individuals specific and aggregate stop-loss for health insurance coverage for a plan year beginning October 1st, 2018. City of Brownsville Health Insurance's plan is a self-funded plan. Since the city's health insurance is self-funded, the city purchased stop-loss insurance to protect itself from large and high claims. Legal notice was for the request for proposal for both individual, specific, and aggregate stop-loss insurance coverage was placed in the Brownsville Herald on May 11th and May 18th. TML assisted us with this process. The deadline to submit the proposal was 2:00 PM on May 21st. TML marketed to 11 different stop-loss carriers. Four carriers originally quoted and seven declined due to uncompetitive. Uncompetitive meaning is that they looked at the current premiums that we had, and they couldn't meet those premiums. During the best and final phase, three of the four carriers declined due to high-risk claims that are currently in the plan. Quotes were, quote options were received by TML from the incumbent stop-loss insurance company. The four quotes on there, and it's one quote, excuse me, one company with four different quotes. Quote number two from Partner RA American Insurance Company was the best and most advantageous to the city. It is a 1215 stop-loss contract that includes medical and, and prescription coverage. Based on quote number two proposal, we recommend that the stop-loss insurance contract for individuals specific and aggregate stop-loss be awarded to Partner RA Insurance Company, which includes a $225,000 individual specific stop-loss deductible and 150 aggregate deductible for annual premium of $832,848. Quote number two also includes an annual aggregate attachment point of $17,539, $439,644. Premiums stay about the same. The only difference on here, we're changing it from the individual stop-loss from 200 to 225. That's why these premiums remain about the same. On this quote, there are two, two individuals are being lasered, meaning that there's two possible claims that the city would have to pay. The $300,000, $350,000, those claims come about in those specific claims. And the reason we're doing, we're getting stop-loss is the premium coverage for, is there's no lifetime limit on medical costs, a result of the Affordable Health Care Care Act. So this basically stops our limit on each one of the cases up to 225,000. After that, the stop-loss carrier takes over the payments. Again, we're recommending that the contract be awarded to Partner RA American Insurance Company.
Do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Before we adjourn, I just want to announce that the Gladys Porter Zoo, for any Brownsville citizen, if you bring your ID, your PUB bill, or, or your school ID that you live here in Brownsville, the admission is $2, only $2 for every member of your family, and that's September 7th through the 9th. It is an, it's a wonderful opportunity to, to enter the zoo for only $2. So that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyway, there's a motion to adjourn, a second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.